Good evening. In the absence of our mayor this evening, she is elsewhere. I'm the vice mayor, so I will be filling in and chairing this meeting. So I will call to order the city council regular meeting here in city council chambers on Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014, at 7:30 PM. If you would please stand for the invocation from Pastor Leonard Lord and then join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pastor?
Thank you, sir. Father, we thank you because of your love for us and sending Jesus that we can approach you by faith in him and his goodness. So, Lord, tonight it's an honor to be here with the council and those that make decisions and care for the city. And so, Lord, we just petition you and we just say that we're a needy people, Lord God. We ask you to forgive us, Lord, when we've not done the things we should and loved one another, Lord God, and we just come tonight and just look to your mercy, Father. You said to come and find favor from you, get your mercy and grace to help in time of need, Lord. We just have need, Lord God, in our departments. We just thank you, Father, for the city. We thank you for every person that lives here. We thank you for the joy of being a part of it. And tonight, as we gather, we just pray for illuminated minds. We pray for the wisdom of God to flow. Thank you that you have set this council and people here to give them wisdom. So we pray for them, Lord God. We just pray for the council or our mayor as she's away, Lord. And we just pray that your wisdom would fill this place and just give us understanding in the decisions that needs to be made. And we just thank you for your goodness. And we do, Father, we ask your blessing upon our city and safety in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Please let the record show Mayor Eloise Taylor is absent tonight. Vice Mayor Bill Colombo.
Here.
Councilman Steve O'Neill.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton.
Here.
Councilman Terrence Rowe.
Here.
City Attorney Joseph Public.
Here.
And City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here. Okay. We have the approval of council minutes, the regular city council minutes of April 9th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, adds, additions? Are we good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Announcements? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. Just two brief items. I wanted to remind you that the Paddle Palooza event is this weekend. It looks like this will be a premier event. They have partnered with Greater Newport Ritchie Main Street and the Cody River Seafood and Blues Festival. Should be a good time for all. A lot of spectator activity and a very nice event on the Port Ritchie waterfront. And so, I'm certain everybody will want to attend that event. It looks like the weather is going to be good as well. Also, we have received all of our contract documentation for the Queener Avenue Lift Station rehabilitation. We're reviewing that at this time. As soon as the city attorney has an opportunity to conclude his review, we will be issuing a notice to proceed for that project.
Very good. Mr. Public?
Nothing this evening, Vice Mayor.
Nothing?
Nothing, out of bed.
Nothing, okay. I'm good with nothing. Comments from the general public? We have a few folks signed up here. Thomas Brown, please.
Thomas Brown, 74, 36, Candlelight Court. You just approved the minutes of the April 9th meeting. I think it was April the 8th.
It was the 9th. I'm sure it was the 9th.
It was the 9th because we had an election on the 8th.
You didn't have it on Tuesday.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, anytime there's an election, we have to have it the next following day. So it was on a Wednesday.
My first question was for Mayor Taylor. Did she get the letter and picture that I left at City Hall this morning?
I can't.
The answer is probably, you don't know.
I can't answer that question. Sorry, sir.
Okay. So I can skip over that one. All right. On April 8th, I left eight letters at City Hall for the council members and Ms. Ewol. And in the first sentence, I referred to lots 12 and 14, and it should have referred to lots 13 and 14. It was a four-page thing, and that was the first sentence. And for the acting police chief, I have a request. Candlelight Court, have you driven on it? The speed limit sign coming in is 20 miles per hour. I dare you to try and drive down there at 20 miles an hour. There's children playing on the street and on both sides, and there's three nasty curves. So maybe you should have an officer in the wee hours of the morning try to drive down there at 20 miles an hour and agree that the speed limit should be reduced there.
Somebody drive in?
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Leonard Lord, sir? Did you have something?
Well, he wants to talk about...
Yeah, I just really wanted to thank the mayor and the council for giving us the opportunity to go out in the city because we know there's two things that needs to happen. Number one, the people that really won't help, need those there to help them. And then those that really want to cause problem in the community really needs to have the police department get them where they need to be and get things right in the city. So I just want to say thanks, council. Thanks for being there and inviting us out. And we want to make ourselves available any way we can, day or night, and would be glad to know the areas that need to be prayed for and how to pray. There's areas crime has went down as much as 60% where the Christians in the area just know and walk and pray the area. And so, I just wanted to thank you and in any way we can help, and I hope together that we can help solve the problem, those that really won't help, that they can find it, and those that don't, and they can get where they need to get help if they don't get it on their own. But thank you, okay, council? Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
When it's my turn, I'll elaborate on that a little bit more.
Sure. You are free to elaborate when your time comes. Matthew Todd, sir?
513 Mallett Drive, Matthew Todd. This is in regards to our police department. And Nancy, council member Nancy Britton, I want you to pay extremely attention to this. I had a police officer come to my house on the 13th, this past, not this Sunday but the Sunday before, and bashing another police officer. Hand it me out, so everybody can see, this is what your police officer, John Schwartz, handed me, defaming another police officer. Why I'm being brought into that, I don't know, but I took this and went and seen our city manager to find out what he's going to do about it. And like usual, nothing going to be done about it. It's going to be swept under the rug. So I followed up and went to the police department and that gentleman there, I made the police report with. Well, as I made the police report, come to find out, I knew the gentleman wasn't going to get, find out about it, the police officer, because our city manager was so worried about me in there filing a police report and kept interrupting his interview with me. So you want to know why policing don't get done in this city and what people are angry about? Here's one of the problems. I hope Officer Kearns takes the steps with the city to file lawsuit because I'm going to, I'm going to stand behind him in that as well. But what the deal is, is I go to the city manager, he does nothing, and the police department does nothing. And Officer Kearns is a victim in here, and I find out yesterday when I get him to come out to my thing, the dispatcher wants to give me a runaround about him coming to my house, so he couldn't find out about. And I know what that was about. It was a stallin' tactic. But I told the dispatcher that I will drive around the city and find him. Here's the police report. If Councilman Britton, if you want to see or any other council members...
Mr. Todd, please. Maintain decorum just a bit. And remember, in this forum, you're supposed to be talking to the person chairing the meeting, not myself.
I'm talking to everybody.
Well, I understand, but sir, I'm telling you, that is in the city charter. That is the way things work.
Well, here's where it lies. We got city management and police chiefs and police captains that can't do their job. It's your job to hire the right people to run this city. And then you want to know why people are fed up and what's going on? Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, sir. Jerry Heckhaus? I'm sorry, I hope I got that right?
It rarely gets, it never gets it the first time, rarely the second time. It's Heck Heis. Heis is Dutch for house, though, so.
Well, yeah.
Goodness, another...
I speak Dutch. I didn't realize it.
Yeah. I pastor Good News Christian Fellowship, and I'm just privileged to be part of the group that meets regularly. We meet every Tuesday, and we pray for Paschal. And you all are a regular part of our prayers, and we want you to know that we're rooting for you. And we pray with the conviction that said in Psalm 127, it's that unless the Lord builds the house, its builder's labor in vain; and unless the Lord watches over the city, its watchmen stand guard in vain. And so, we're constantly seeking the Lord's ways and his blueprints for how a city works and how a community works. And we're lifting you up, and we'll continue to do so, not only in prayers, but as we get direction and as you request, we'll pray specifically, but we'll also work and continue to be servants here in this community. Leonard Lord and a few others had the privilege of going out and serving in a very concrete way. I think that Councilman Britton was part of, as well as Mayor Eloise Taylor. And we just want you to know that we're continuing to be available to you, and we thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, sir. Sandra Spaldy, come on up.
Sandra Spaldy, 8207 Old Post Road, Port Ritchie. Hello.
Hello.
How is everybody?
We're great.
Long time no hear, Sandy.
I know. Do you miss me?
We always miss you.
Okay. Our park next door to me is doing very well. People are enjoying it. Why do we have to spend another million dollars on it? Doesn't make sense. Money could be used for something else. Maybe a little bit of money for a little bit of cleanup here and there, but people are enjoying it the way it is. There's nothing really wrong with that park. I should know. I live next door to it. Number one. Number two, I'm not going to argue about our police department because I love them all, but I am going to argue with our water department, if I may, Pat. You ready?
I'm ready.
And our city manager, if I may. Couple of my neighbors and myself have a problem with our sewer line. When the city put the sewer line in, it didn't put it in deep enough. So therefore, we get back up a lot. I did call our city manager. He had said it was our problem. No, not our problem. It's your problem. Now, when you put the new pipes in, please put them in lower so we have that grade for our waste to go out. Is that too difficult to ask? Is it my problem or is it the pipes from the city's problem?
Well, ma'am, you know...
I'm sorry. I have to talk to you.
You know as well as I do, it's not a question and answer up here.
I know. But I like to throw the questions out. It gives time for thought.
Can't hardly blame you.
What I'm trying to say is this. We have to pay for it to be snaked out more often than we should, okay? I don't have any kids. I don't have anything thrown down the toilet bowl or down the drain. I feed the fat in the frying pan to the tree out in the front. It's growing beautifully. But if the pipes of the sewer from the city are not low enough, the water doesn't flush out, the waste doesn't flush out. And I don't think it's our job. I think it's the city's job. Vice Mayor, could you please let our manager know that because I have to talk to you?
He's jodding right now.
Oh, okay. So can I talk to him?
You may speak to him, or he may speak to you.
Can I call you tomorrow?
Oh, yes. Tomorrow.
This is on the sewer, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, he could call me anyway.
That's all.
He might need some prayers or healing. That's okay.
Okay.
All right. So those are the two things I'm bringing up tonight. I do intend to come back to the meetings a little more often. I will be gone the month of May, but I will be back. I could have a little more time.
You can have a little more time.
Thank you.
A little more.
But I am going to write a little list, if you don't mind. Am I allowed? Now, I just want to know this for sure. I think I am. But am I allowed to write my little list and to call each of you on it?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Or you can email us, or you can...
I don't have a computer.
Okay. Or you can give a copy to the city clerk and she will come in.
No, I want to call you each on it, if I may.
I would personally rather a phone call.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the way I like it.
You are certainly free to, yes.
Thank you. And I'll leave you guys with that.
Thank you.
I'm going to email the guy.
Mark Abbott, sir?
Mark Abbott, staying at 7907 Washington Street, Port Ritchie. So I just want to address a few things. I think everybody in here obviously knows me and helped out with some of your elections. And I felt like I was mistreated during the election, but I came in and addressed the people face to face and spoke with Tom, who I've known for a long time, and the police department and so on. And then I went to the division of elections, and I did ask the judges not to certify it, but I went ahead and submitted the evidence of the signs and the intersections and so on and so forth. So since we all know each other, and it's very hard to talk to upper end of police departments until you actually trust them. And so, in the past, when we've had some drugs coming in from Dade City and heavy weapons and talking to people, there are certain people you can trust and so on. But for the people that don't want to speak up, down on the boulevard, there's a house and that house the hookers have been pulling into and having sex in the driveway there and so on and so forth. They're putting up some fences now. They're doing all these different things. And they just don't come and they don't speak up. And what we need to do, if we're going to be doing, changing of police and stuff, is the property on Washington Street is where the policemen sleep and hang out. So New Year's Eve, we had a big incident over at Seaside, and there were some things that happened there. But the next morning, on New Year's Day, they spent, I think, as I went off to breakfast and back and forth, I don't know, it could be three, four, or five hours. As we campaigned, we saw many police officers are in there. Now, we know in the old days, I used to drive around and chase out the bombs, and my mom chased the police chief down one day on that. But when you call for help and then you go around or you hear all these stories and you see the volume of policemen sleeping in fields, it really makes you wonder, is there ever anybody in police management that ever drives around? We use GPSs in the sheriff's department, state highway patrol, everything else. When are we going to get our police department in order? The typical citizen is not willing to come up here and talk like this. In the past, I get pulled over after I talk like this. So we've had some policemen recently make some mistakes, and they went up to people and actually apologized. So I am not abashing every single policeman. Just somebody's got to be aware of what's going on in this town. Thank you.
You're welcome. And it was one other gentleman who signed up here. I believe it says, sir?
Can't read the name.
Is it Walter?
Walter Frankenfield.
There you go.
I have that name correct. Good evening. My name's Walter Frankenfield, 7552 Grand Boulevard, 30-year resident. Good evening, y'all. Basically, I'm here to introduce myself. There's been a lot of, a lot of different things I've been hearing about city council, about the police department, a lot of talk on the street. Not good. We need to straighten up our act, get it right. Now, this is my first meeting in about 15 years that I've attended, but you're woke in a sleeping giant. I will be attending, so take notice. Thank you very much.
That was very dramatic. Thank you, sir. All right. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak that hadn't signed up? I'm just in that kind of mood today.
Jim Priest, 5100 Sunset Boulevard. Like a lot of folks in this, in our lobby here, you know, on it and up there on the dais, I've been here for, going on a couple decades now, and I've watched a lot of change, good and bad with it. I know there's been, for some reason, a lot of effort and a lot of conversation has been about our police department. And I'm kind of amazed that folks who've been here at least for a year or two in there, maybe three, would recall when these officers didn't have ammunition to go and service themselves. They didn't have a vest that was certified. They were hot-seating cars in here, but we didn't have an ability to go ahead and put them in a vehicle. And these were cars that were well past their, you know, how should we say, value date in here. And this had all changed and has changed over the past few years now. And I guess you can, you know, you can, you know, find something and picket things and so on here on it, but you, I think if you're going to be honest about it, you need to look at what the good is that has transpired also. These officers have a rotation of vehicles now. They have proper armament. They have proper securitization, okay, as far as themselves be concerned. You know, and that's all happened under, you know, basically this council's watch. And, you know, it needs to be spoke to, okay? There's a lot, it's a, you know, how should we say? It's a good way to try to get your political ideology out there to go out and try to bash things, okay, when you really don't want to speak to the whole picture. When you look at the whole picture and there, you see the good that has been done. And I think that needs to be accountable for everybody, not just on council and there, but the folks in this dais, excuse me, in this lobby as well here, that you need to understand what all the good that has transpired. Be cognizant of it in here, and if you want to speak to some problems, look, with this, with just the PD alone, the FD, wasn't that many years ago, Chief, we didn't even have a fire truck? We had guys going to, going to emergencies out there in a Ford Taurus, I believe it was, in here. Lot has changed, and a lot of change for the good in here. And I just want to thank you all for that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
Kathy Todd, 5113 Mallett Drive. I just want to say, I thank the Lord, I did not get that position because with what's going on and what this city is doing, it's a shame. It's a shame I can't go to my police department. Do you know I was told that once you make this position, they drill holes in your head and suck your brain out? One of your citizens told me that. I thank the Lord that I didn't get this position now, knowing what's going on. I just want to say retaliation that's been going on can stop. We don't need people coming up and putting more sand in our gas tanks. We filed reports and been to the city manager, and it's like, oh, no, we just don't do things like that. But in fact, it's been happening for many of years here, and it's a shame. Shame on you. Shame on every one of you.
And thank you for the brain-sucking analogy. All righty. Since I'm assuming we're done with public comment, I will bring it back up to the dais here, back up to comments from the mayor and council. I would like to start off with just sort of a broad comment, sort of a broad-brush comment. And that is, especially for those of you who've been in the city for a long time, who like Mr. Abbott, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Priest, who have been involved in city council in varying capacities, that the management of specific departments in a strong city manager type of government, which is what we have here, which is not a strong mayor type of government, restricts us from getting involved in the management and the day-to-day operations of different departments. So for instance, letters like you got, things like I got, I'm not supposed to be getting those things. That would be interference on my part. And this city had it, as many of the old timers know, got in a big trouble on that particular subject some, how many years ago now, guys? 10, 12 years ago or such? So, 13? Thank you, Sandy. So, you know, specifically, there is the, all employees of the city, with the exception of the city manager and the city attorney, are under the auspices of the city manager department. Now, I'm hearing complaints about the police tonight that I've not heard before. Now, obviously, there's a lot going on, and obviously, it's being, A, being looked at very thoroughly, and B, is going to be looked at very thoroughly. No matter how this turns out, I expect things to be above reproach. I expect us to have quality policemen and women who are here to do their job and to do nothing else. And we may have that. We may have that less one. I don't know. But that's the direction I want to go, and I'm sure that's the direction everybody here involved with the city wants to go. But Mr. Priest makes some very good observations. We have come a long way, but there's obviously some problems out there, and there's nobody up here denying that, and it's our job to fix that. So, you know, having jumped a gun and took the first shot, as the guy sitting in the middle, I'll ask for comments. Nancy, you had something to add to Mr. Lord, what Mr. Lord was speaking of?
Yeah. First question I want to ask is, well, May 6th. May 6th, we have a CRA meeting. So I'm speaking in reference to May 6th, gentlemen, which I would like if Pastor Lord, if you all can attend that meeting possibly, just this way we can talk more about what we've done in the past. I just wanted to bring up that Pastor Lord and his group came out a couple weeks back, and we went out to Limit Drive to try and talk to some of the people that are out there to find out in what way we could assist them either to move on or to give them some assistance in whether or not they were being treated fairly by the landlord and whatnot. So, you know, many years ago, we cleaned up Grand Boulevard and also Pine Hill Road by getting the people of the city together to move forward and band together and fight against, you know, issues and crime and whatnot. And like Pastor Lord said, there's some people that want to be helped, and there's some people that don't want to be helped. We're there to help the ones that want to be helped and to move on the ones that don't. We had a meeting recently. I felt as though it was, it was time for us to talk to the Salvation Army. We had a meeting with Mr. O'Neill, myself, Kim Bogart from the Newport Ritchie Police Department, and several other people from the Salvation Army. Mainly, we went there for a couple reasons. One, to find out from the Salvation Army, how can we better deal with the problem? And also to let them know that they are bringing, you know, people into our community that are causing problems. The meeting was, went quite a long time, about an hour, hour and a half or so. We are going to meet again in approximately 30 days to see in what direction we're going to go as a group. But I can say this, that Salvation Army and the city of Port, excuse me, the city of Newport Ritchie and the city of Port Ritchie have basically come together and said, you know, we are going to police this matter and get together with the citizens to fight the issues that we're having here. We have a lot of people that are just roaming our streets, and some of them are just out there to get help, some of them are out there to cause trouble. And so, you know, we really have to band together and get moving on that. So we're going to meet with the CRA on May 6th, and once again, we'll be asking for more opportunity to do this policing. And then we'll be able to, at the CRA meeting, set up maybe some more dates and whatnot that we can get together and then alert the citizens that we can go out and meet with them. Pastor Lord, you have a remarkable way with the people out there. Every one of you did. It was an experience of a lifetime to go out there and really find out where these, some young kids, some older people, you know, where they're headed, what they need. So do you want to come up and discuss?
I think basically, we all need the same thing. We need love and acceptance. And due to what's going on in our lives, and so we need to offer that. And I, if I understand right, after we had went out and prayed with the people, and the people said, we're not causing the problem. There are people coming through here and they're dealing drugs. If I understand right, right after we went out, they did bust a couple of people selling drugs, correct?
I'm not sure.
I don't know the specific people that went out and had that.
Well, right after that, I'd heard that there were two felons that had been busted, and they had guns. I mean, the report that came back to me. And what I'm saying is, Nancy, is there is a Creator that loves everybody out there, is, Nancy, is there is a Creator that loves everybody out there, and He's concerned about all of them, but we make choices. And as Pastor Jerry said, we have tried to study and pray, what does it take to make a city prosperous and be successful? Well, we have studied and met with some people that have done it. And in doing it, what happens is, is they have got together and begin to just pray and look to the Lord to do things. And we find out, for instance, in Cali-Columbia, they was so many drug lords. I mean, we saw the documentary on that. I mean, they pretty much run the place. Well, when the community got out in an all-night prayer meeting with the pastors, and the community came out, they filled up the, the stadium, the mayor let them get there, they didn't even have enough to get in. After an all-night prayer meeting, something began to happen. God moved in hearts, the military was there, the drug lords were busted, and things began to turn around. So, what we found, every time there's any kind of dramatic switch to the good, there is a core of people that begin to cry out to God, repent for what they've done wrong, get their lives right. For, for instance, Second Chronicles 7:14, God says, "If His people that are called by His name would humble themselves, seek His face, and turn from their wicked ways, that He would hear from heaven and heal the land." So, that's the part we want to do. And what, because we can't change hearts, we can't change attitudes, but the conviction and the presence and the power of the Holy Spirit can do that in lives.
Well, the best part about having, having you there was the fact that when, if people did want help in that way, you were able to be there for them. And, and I thank you for that, and all the people that came with you. Tremendous group of people, by the way. Really nice people.
And, and we enjoyed partnering with y'all, because it is two ways. Romans 12 tells us that if somebody's hungry, we're to feed them. If they're thirsty, we're to give them a drink. But then the 13th chapter says, you know, after vengeance is God's, that He has the law enforcement, and they don't bear the sword in vain. So, the two working together, like we talked about, we go out and try to get help, and then, you know, working with the police department, being there to help where we can. And then we believe that the two together, and this is the strategy that the sheriff, he's called all the pastors in all over the county, and we went over this time and time again, that the two working together, the mercy of the church and the judgment of the law enforcement is really what makes the community function and, and really, you know, work together. It takes all of us. So, I just want to thank you all for being open to it. And we have a group that are praying, and we just really want to see the love and peace in our community and people to be saved. And we know, as Pastor Jerry said from Psalms 127, hey, we can have the biggest police force in the world, and if God don't keep the city, it won't be kept. You know, you can build the biggest house you want to, and if God's love isn't in it, it's just going to be strangers in there. So, we know that there is the love of God that desires to radiate through us and bring our community together and serve one another, okay?
Well, it's also great to have Kim Bogart on our team, too, because-
Sure, he's great.
-he, he spends a lot of time in the homeless, with the homeless coalition, along with a former mayor, Rover. And, you know, and I have the experience of, of, you know, clean up the city once before. We, we have a lot of work to do, and-
Right. But together, we can do it with the Lord, the help of the Lord, we can do it.
Please, I was going to say, I appreciate everything you have to say, and we will come to that at the CRA meeting, but that is-
Thank you.
This is way out of a norm for council comment, having people come and give, you know, evidentiary testimony or whatever, so.
It's a special thing, you know.
I understand, I understand. Mr. Rowe, you look like you have something to say.
I do. Pardon me if I seem a little crabby tonight, I'm not feeling well.
Are you sick?
Is it contagious, is what Nancy's asking?
A lot's gone on in the last week or so. Disappointing things. I'm not going to go into them in detail, because there is an investigation that will be, or is being launched. Unfortunately, two of our best officers aren't here with us tonight. With that being said, I'll get back to that later. First thing I want to address is this council was approached by people from the trailer parks about their water rates. They came to our meeting, they spent their time here, they pleaded with us to address it. I asked to have that put on the agenda, this meeting. It is not there. I got an email back that I'm supposed to ask mother, may I, to the city manager and the attorney. I'm sorry, council, I don't agree with that. When I ask for something to be put on the agenda, I expect it to be put on the agenda, and this council can decide what we're going to talk about, how we're going to talk about it. And if the attorney wants to advise us as we proceed, that's fine. These people have a right in this city to be heard. They don't live in our city, but they buy our water. They are our customers, and they have every right for us to discuss their condition, their problems, their complaint. I don't appreciate it, and this is the second time this has happened. I wrote a lengthy email to the city manager the last time and scolded him over this. I don't suppose I'm going to get any support from this council, because I've seemed to be alone in things anymore. It's time to decide, council, whether you want to be council people, men and women, or you want to be puppets, because that's what I'm seeing here. I refuse to be a puppet. We are in charge of this city. The city manager is in charge of the operations. And from what I'm seeing in the last few days, I'm wondering if that's even being done very well. Lot of talk about who was responsible for what, when, and how it happened. But in the final analysis, and when you look at the charter, the buck, the ninety thousand dollar buck stops at the city manager's desk. And nobody, no one has said a word about his lack of diligence in this. The officers are getting blamed for things. I'll tell you, as the CEO, it goes to the top, and they are the ones that get the ultimate blame. How three cars can disappear out of this city without the city manager knowing when he is directly responsible to bring it to this council for disposition? I don't understand that at all. Along with that, I have a problem with this fence. This gentleman's been here five times, six times now, still hasn't had an answer on a fence. But it's been, I understand, deeded again by our city, found to be improper. I've brought all the issues up, I've talked to the city attorney about this. I do not find it to be a legal fence. And to add to this, now we have another one in the city, folks. And this is going to be the problem, because that ordinance was made to keep the waterway views open. It's a clear intent when you read the, the statute. I'm not going to bandy words like they do, whether it's a natural water body. It is a natural water body, by the way, because it was water there before, and it has to come from somewhere. But I'm not going to split hairs on that. We have another fence that went up along Bay Boulevard, down just a little bit to the west of Miller's Bayou Drive, blockade fence blocking water. I don't know what's going on. I don't understand why these things are happening, how they get permitted. This is not the way we should be running this city. This is the second meeting with an agenda with one item on it. Spent all this money, and of late, we have half the staff here in our meetings, and one item. Talk about waste of dollars, waste of time. There's got to be more going on in this city than one item. What I see in the PD problem, I'm not blaming anyone, we've got good officers, we've got good cops on the street. I've talked with them, I've seen them in action. There's a breakdown, it's in procedures and leadership. And that saddens me. For that, a couple people may just have to leave their positions. I don't know what the outcome's going to be. But I don't like when I get home at night and I turn on the TV and I see Port Ritchie on the tube again. It's happened too many times the last few years. It's not something that used to happen all the time, but of late, it happens. We are becoming a laughing stock, and I don't want any part of it. I want some changes put into this city, I want some leadership shown, I want to see things turned around. With that being said, I hope that as we move forward, that we can start moving in the right direction. Because it seems like we're regressing back into the old days. And that's a sad, sad state of affairs, that's what has happened. That's all I have for right now. Okay, Steve?
Okay, well, I do know we have a light agenda, so I'll, I'll add a few things. I'm going to start fresh with the, with the fence issue itself. I had brought this up, I've actually brought a fence down in this community while it was about three quarters of the way up. So, I, I know it's a problem. That's going to be discussed, be taken care of. There seems to be a little bit of a trend going on. I don't think this is in relation to what we're talking about at Candlelight. I'll just say that in relation to some other recent fences that had gone up, one of which I had helped bring down, I don't know how that's occurring either. I think that's something that has to be examined. Folks, it's very easy to paint a picture of everything that's dim, okay? I've sat up here now through four city managers. In the audience tonight, we have a few previous council members. A lot has happened in the time that I've been here. Ms. Todd, I'm sorry that you feel that, you know, this is kind of a, a brainwashing up here. I can assure you, it's not. Maybe one day, you're going to get a chance to sit up here. And when you do, you'll have to bring some positive energy. You will see what is, what is positive and, and not so much all of the negative. It's very easy to picture police, water, fire, I've, I've seen it all discussed. Get rid of the police, do this, do that. When I joined on here, it was about all dissolving the city. I got a quick education on how this city, first of all, functions, all the integral parts. You see all these people sitting around here? I can assure you, they all work hard. These, these folks come to work each day. And this, as you know, you live here, this is a wonderful place to live, got a beautiful waterfront. We've had water issues, we're still talking about that. We've got a beautiful waterfront. I don't know if a lot of you are coming to the meetings, I remember when we had a, a picture here, putting us into a financial state of emergency. Those days are gone, okay? I think we've run a much better ship, and again, I've been through four of them up here. I think Tom does a good job. Is, is there room for improvement in some areas? You bet. And, and we're going to work on that. I think we have been working on that. Most of the folks up here have sat here for a few times. Nancy, been here a few times. Myself, been here some years. Terry, he's sitting here a second time. Work does get done. As Bill indicated, there's a certain type of system that we have to work under. And that's just a fact. A laughing stock, look at it how you want. I've been here ten years, folks. I don't see anything to laugh about, okay? I think there's a lot of positive that's occurred, certainly over the ten years that I've, I've been in here. And, and I'm coming to the end of my term. Someone else will sit up here. There'll be problems to solve then, too. But I assure you, these people that are sitting here work hard. When I've had to call and get information, I've gotten information, and I haven't had to wait. I just want to add a few positive, positive notes to what I hear is always so negative. You know, let's work together. You know, my email's there, email me. You know, water customers, Terry, that's going to come back. It's, 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 it's there. You're right, I'll agree with you. I think it's, it's up to us to fill a little bit more of this agenda as well. There are some times this thing, I, 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 you know, I know we've got new folks out here, but I assure you, in, in, in the ten years I've been, and Nancy as well, there've been some three-hour meetings here. I can recall one time leaving at one o'clock in the morning. Work gets done. These previous council members know that as well. There's a lot that, that sometimes can, can come in bunches. And we're seeing some of those bunches, and they're going to make it to the agenda. You know, water, dredging, you, you name it. There're going to be a few more things coming up, I assure you. So, I don't see too many of these nights of one agenda items.
Okay. Mr. O'Neil, do you want to add to any of the things that were brought up here? Because a whole bunch of them are.
I don't have anything to add.
You don't have anything to add? Okay.
I do.
You do? Okay, go ahead.
Well, you know, I, I just wanted to find out from Tom, why Mr. Rose, he was not on the agenda, that he tried to get on the agenda, that he asked you to put on about the workers, about the water for the mobile home parks.
I sent out emails about a month ago, and advised every council member that there have been discussions with the mobile home parks that are outside the city, the ones that were granted relief. And at this point, because of the potential for litigation, I believe it's in the best interest of the city not to have an extended public discussion on the matter. And I invited anyone on the council to discuss it with me personally, or discuss it with the city attorney. I have discussed it with the city attorney in detail. And I don't know if Joe has any comment on that or not, but I don't think at this point, it's in the best interest of the city to talk about that matter in detail, because we have no further action that's been contemplated, and we have no further action with regard to the rates that's been contemplated.
I'd like to respond to that. Sir? The latest emails that I've received, and I'm sure you all received them as well, has definitely given me the concept that these trailer parks are playing to seek legal action. In the past, this city has been sued because of stupid things that weren't looked into or handled properly. And we, the taxpayers, you, Mr. O'Neil, you, Phil Columbo, you Nancy, myself, and everybody out there picks up the tab for these things. I made it my first and primary directive when I took this chair, that I was going to do everything I could to get away from lawsuits. When I took this chair, we had several large, very large lawsuits pending against this city, which we lost and had to pay, and budget suffered for it. I'm sick and tired of stupid decisions being made, and then the taxpayers having to pick up the tab for it. The fact that this, these, these people came to this council to talk, they're not, they've already talked to the city manager, they've already talked to the lawyers, they're asking us if we want to pursue this course. Now, in those emails I got from Tom, he said this, these water rates are very defensible. I'm pretty sure that's almost a direct quote, but it may not be, but very close. If they're so defensible, then why are we so afraid to talk about it? These are the things I'm seeing where we're having problems, folks. This council is being led instead of leading.
Well, that was a question that was asked, I think, when we talk about, and let's talk about it. Let, let's open it up, if we could. I'm here long enough, I know what the lawsuits are, okay? I, I think everybody's aware of the ninety thousand dollar lawsuit, and I think we all know how that went. I will say that-
Steve, which lawsuit is that?
Previous city manager lawsuit in relation to-
And what happened with that?
Well, that was nothing.
Nothing, yeah, okay.
Right. That's why I said zero.
Just wanted to be clear about that. I'm sorry.
That, that involved a labor attorney, that was not our attorney.
Right. I just wanted to be clear that we did not pay ninety thousand dollars to anybody, you know?
Not that I'm aware of. But in reference to what Terry indicated, I think you're correct, but I think that came from Burton and Associates. We had asked at that time whether this was defensible or not, when we're talking about some of those rates. Now, we would have to go back and look, you know, as we've discussed with irrigation, that not part of the discussion at that particular time, but it was referenced by Burton, because that question did come up. Now, it may have come up as well here, but I know those discussions in- Now, it may have come up as well here, but I know those discussions in having Burton here, I believe two or three times, that it was pointed then that that was defensible. Now, you know, that, you know, I do know there's lots happened with the water, I know that's been a delicate area, if you would, knowing, knowing what we had gone through, what we paid for. You know, I take fault for that myself and folks that have sat up here because for 10 years, those incremental increases were not there. And I think you know that as well, coming in. There is more to discuss there. I mean, you know, Saul, when we gave the credits out, we talked about a recent $13,000 in credits that were given to the benefit of residents. You know, look, the city has given back. I'm not saying that everything is perfect, but, you know, certainly measures have been taken. I just wanted to verify that figure, I think it was 12, 13,000.
Yeah, I don't have the exact figure, but it was in the realm of that.
Right.
And then also, I just wanted to make a point that we just, we recently just changed the irrigation tiers on that as well, so. And that went to effect this billing period.
Right. And, look, I live in sand pebble, we've taken measures with what we use out there, which is in the thousands and thousands of gallons, that, you know, we will add these sensors, if you would, this is something that's come up on the, or going to come up in the CRA discussion, that there are monies that would probably help. I know in my community, that will help. How much that's going to be, I don't know, but the overall goal is conservation and I think part of that gets lost in some of the discussions that we're having.
I just, I just, go ahead, go ahead.
I know we're getting off track.
Yeah, well, it's not so much we're getting off track, but like you said, we had a light agenda, so it's not like having a long, either comments from the public or the council.
I think we're adding to the agenda right now.
Well, that's it.
As Terry indicated, we want to see more than one.
We get to a certain point where-
I like to see more than one item too, Terry.
We are adding to, we are adding to it. I would just, I would just briefly say that is my understanding, when it comes to the mobile home parks and the water, is that they're not necessarily complaining about the rates, but the methodology that the rates are calculated under. And as far as I'm concerned, those particular methodologies were done to be in their favor in the first place, so. But that's just my opinion. It is true that in a situation like this, if somebody, the minute somebody pops up and says, "We're contemplating litigation," the best thing you can do is shut up and hand it to your lawyer, because that's pretty much just the way it works. Any one of us can, can and will, no matter what the situation may be that regards to litigation, say something that, you know, anything you can say and will be used against you. I mean, we're on film, there's a camera, videotape and everything we're doing right there, and you can wind up being your own worst witness, so. There's reasons why it's best to stay away from things where the other party has expressed an interest in litigating their point of view. And then that's, it's up to our attorney's opinion to decide for us or help us decide, and we would do that in an executive committee, whether what is our best procedure at that standpoint. That's just the way it goes. We, as a city, I am sorry, cannot run every time somebody threatens a lawsuit. We have to, we have to consider that and we have to, it's part of the business. There is not a municipal entity or a county entity around here that doesn't have somebody trying to sue them. They just see any government entity is a big pocket and we don't like what you're going to do, so we're going to sue you. That's life, you know, I mean, in this business anyway, so. Okay, let me wrap up comments from the mayor and city council and get on to this heavy agenda we have right here. Because number one is the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion? Do we have a motion? Either way, I'll take either one.
Are these trucks physically here?
The consent agenda.
Oh, the consent, I'm sorry. Better myself again.
Yeah. You just get so anxious, don't you?
Well, as you did it before, you just wanted a consensus, so it wasn't, didn't have to make a motion.
Yeah, it was either a motion or comment.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion, we got a second. Any other comment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, let's move on to council business, number two. Think I would have flipped my pages ahead of time, don't you? Where the heck is it? Okay. Agenda item number two, public works vehicles to be declared as surplus. Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
Lead us off on this one?
This is on the agenda tonight to request your decision on declaring these two vehicles, they're both trucks, as surplus equipment. We are proposing that the items be disposed of through the Tampa Machinery Auction and any money received would be placed back into the city's general fund. They are in the parking lot at this time, on the west side of the parking lot, in case anyone wants to look at them. They had to be towed up there today because they do not run. And we're proposing that they be disposed of and sold. And so, that's the request in front of you tonight.
Now, that was, moving the vehicles around in the front was at my request. I don't know if anybody had a chance to take a look at them?
Oh, I saw them, yes, yeah. The big red one.
1967, isn't that worth some money?
And the other, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, well-
Isn't that a collector or something?
Being that we have the issues that we have, I would motion to approve, but also motion to approve with paperwork coming to the next council meeting that shows that's where they went.
Yes, it'll take a little longer than that to get them picked up by Tampa Machinery Auction.
Well, within the next couple of weeks, please.
Sure.
Okay, that's, anybody else on council have any discussion on that issue? No?
Just 85,000 miles. I know our trucks are used hard. But my God, that's not much mileage of a truck.
Well, here, let me offer something, Terry. Let me offer a 10-minute recess.
Oh, I don't have a problem.
Anybody wants to.
I mean, if they're shot, they're shot.
Well, I'm just going to say, you can go out and take a look at that truck out there. You know, I mean, you know, to just, to make that comment, I hear what you're saying because that was my own issue about bringing them around. So I was saying, you know, I'll have a recess and y'all can go out and take a look at them. And-
That's fine, if they're shot, they're shot, but, you know. Are we doing PMs on these things and how are they being cared for? 85,000 miles on a truck is-
Well, it was a shed.
I'm running one for the county and believe me, it wasn't taking, you know, they try to take care of them, they do regular PMs. But that thing's got 140,000 on and still is ready to run. So I know they get a harder use, but that's not-
Well, we've asked that question before, I think, whether it would fleet maintenance or something, and I don't know if the chief commented on it or somebody did when we had gone through, well, it may have been.
They're being maintained regularly, but duty in a utility department is probably one of the most difficult duties that a truck can have. Probably the only thing that's more intense than that is a police interceptor. And typically, they're cycled out between 60 and 80,000 miles because they're just beyond the end of their life for police vehicles. With the utility department vehicle, a lot of times, they power up a lot of auxiliary equipment, sump pumps, lighting, and other things under emergency conditions, 24/7. And so, they get a lot of hard use out in the field. And a mileage odometer reading is not necessarily indicative of the condition that they're in.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, do we have a motion to declare them a surplus? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, I'll go out to public comment on this before we take a vote. I don't know we have anybody signed up for it, but I will certainly entertain it. No? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That concludes our agenda for the meeting, so unless anybody else has any issues, I will adjourn this meeting. City Council meeting.